Hello, my name is Lucina Russell and I'm the Arts Officer for Kildare County Council. You're very welcome to this information session on how to apply for grants with the Arts and Cultural Services in Kildare County Council. Today we're going to look at a range of schemes that are funded by Kildare Art Service, under Kildare Creative Ireland Programme, the Short Grass Films Initiative and the Decade of Commemorations. And just to emphasise that the deadline for the grants is the 18th of March at 12 noon. And as usual, we don't accept late applications, so it's very important that you get your application in early. So I'll just get started here and just to say that the image here on the right hand side is an image from the art strategy that we have at the moment and the image is part of a project that an artist called Sheena Malone had. And we used this image with her permission on the cover of the strategy and it was actually a project that was developed in Allen Wood and it was funded through the Arts Act Grant Scheme a number of years ago. And we have lots of projects that were funded that you can maybe go through our social media and to our websites to have a look at some of the projects that we funded in the past. And so I'm just going to get started and go through the range of grants that we have available. You don't need to write everything down, like I said, you'll be able to refer back to this when it's recorded. But also all of the information about the grants is on the online system as well, so the information is all there. So just first, and I'm going to try and break it down that you're not going to be too bamboozled with information. And I'm going to start first with the range of grants that the Art Service coordinates. And just to put a definition on what the arts is, we use the arts, we define them under the Arts Act 2003, meaning any creative or interpretive expression, whether traditional or contemporary, in whatever form, and includes in particular visual arts, theatre, literature, music, dance, opera, film, circus and architecture, and includes any medium when used for those purposes. So you can see that that definition is very broad and it allows for artists to work across mediums. So you might have a theatre practitioner who also works in dance, or somebody who's working in literature who also works in visual arts and we allow for that within the grants. So this is the first tranche of grants that I'm going to talk about today and the Arts Act Grant, it's, that's the main, I suppose you could call that the catch-all grant and it probably will be the one that most of you are interested in. So the type of people or individuals or groups to apply for that, it can be professional artists. And when I say artists, I mean artists in all art form areas. So that could be visual artist, dancer, an architect, a theatre practitioner, filmmaker, and all of the arts that were listed on the, under the definition on the previous slide. Professional artists tend to apply for things like development money, so maybe to make a new play for some sort of body of work. And it's development money or realisation money, so maybe to get an exhibition completed and get it ready for display. You can also apply for things like materials and equipment, so that could be maybe a painter applying for paint or maybe camera equipment. So it really just depends, maybe a musician applying for funding towards buying a new instrument or a piece of equipment for that. And it also, we invite applications from community groups. So that could be a community group that wants to engage the services of an artist. And it also involves community artists. Sorry, so any community arts collective, so maybe like a visual arts collective for example. So, and there's further information about each of these schemes on the website about exactly what it covers. And so again, those, we say musical societies for example, we prefer, rather than somebody applying for the overall cost of their annual play for example, we would prefer to see applications for things like to have a guest director to come in or maybe some professional mentoring, something that just might raise the standard of the work. What we're most interested with, maybe community groups or maybe amateur drama, musical societies. But I suppose we deliberately leave it open as we do with a lot of the grants to allow you to interpret to see if, to, you should try and fit it to fit your project to the scheme itself. And I'm actually going to go through, in the second part of the application, I'm actually going to through, go through an Arts Act Grant Application. So that we'll be able to chat about it a little more then as well. The second scheme then is the Artist in Schools Residency Bursary Award. And that's an award of two and a half thousand euro for an artist, again across art form, to work in a school, primary or secondary in County Kildare. And on that application, the artist and school need to apply together. So it's not enough for a school to say, we want to work with a dancer or a theatre practitioner, they need to name the person. And the application should read that there has been a conversation between the school and the artist and that they're applying for this together. And I mentioned that the award for that is two and a half thousand euro and in recent years we've awarded between four and five awards. And just to say this year, obviously we're in a Covid climate, I'm going to try and not mention that too much today. But just to say that with all of these grants, we will allow flexibility for delivery. So if timeframe changes or the format of delivery changes, we will allow for that. But your, your application should also address it if it is something that is going to require some engagement with a community group or some sort of a public access. The third scheme that we have here is the Artistic Entrepreneur Bursary Award and that's with the Kildare Local Enterprise Office. And that's an award of 1500 euro to develop an idea. It can be an idea or a service and I suppose it tends to be something that wouldn't really fit under the Arts Act Grant. It might have more of a, I suppose either a service or a product. So for example, it might be a jewellery designer or could be a service that you want to maybe develop a theatre school for working with children. And the award for that is 1500 euro and the Leo office provides mentoring to the value of 1000 euro with that as well. And I know in recent years, all of the applicants, regardless of whether they got the bursary or not, got some mentoring from Leo as well. So that's a good one if you have sort of a, a business idea. We don't fund commercial activity, but we want to try and encourage that entrepreneurship as well. There is only one award in that each year. The Denis O'Driscoll Literary Bursary Award, we have two awards in that. The first one is 1500 euro for an emerging writer and the second one is for a professional writer and that award is for 2000 euro. And they're both to develop a body of work in literature. Just one award in that category for those. And they need to just outline a specific body of work that the money would go towards. The Drama League of Ireland Summer School, every year we award a number of bursaries for theatre practitioners from Kildare to attend a summer school. It's been running for the last number of years in Limerick, in UL. We're hoping it's going to go ahead and we're assuming that it will. So there's two bursary awards to attend the summer school, including the fees and accommodation. But if it doesn't happen in the room this year, I believe they're running online programmes for recipients. So if you're interested in that, I'd say still apply. And we'll always allow flexibility, particularly at this time, to ensure that the commitment to the award is honoured. The next one is the Emerging Visual Artist Solo Exhibition Award and that is an award of two and a half thousand euro. And that is in association with Riverbank Art Centre in Newbridge. And that is for, for a solo show of work to be developed for display in the gallery. As well as the cash award, there is also a support provided by the Art Centre in terms of technical marketing and just general guidance around the exhibition and recipients have said that, while, while the grant aid is welcome, that they really appreciated the other supports like the technical support, like to get somebody to hang your exhibition professionally and all of the marketing supports, maybe people have only ever done it by themselves. We're deliberately vague on what emerging means and I suppose with the Denis O'Driscoll Literary Bursary Award, about how you define yourself as an emerging writer, you don't have to be a certain age to do that. We're talking about emerging in terms of your practice. So you could be an older artist, but in terms of where you're at, the stage of development you are at, you consider yourself emerging. And the next one then is Executive Coaching for Creative Professionals. And Matthew Rowley, who runs this coaching, actually was a recipient of the Artistic Entrepreneur Bursary Award a few years ago. So he wanted to create this service to develop executive coaching for creative professionals. So it's nice to think that it's come full circle and that Matthew is offering this executive coaching. So that's one-to-one where Matthew will talk to you about your practice. And again, we've got really good feedback on that this year. A lot of artists working in many areas. You know, and just to try and maybe give some focus and to just reflect on your practice and where you want to go. So the award of those, I think they're to the value of 1500 euro and a number of awards were made in recent years. The next one is a local publishing award. And we set this one up because some of the applications we're getting fell between the stools in terms of literature. So they might necessarily have been a creative writing slant on them. So for example, last year we funded a project about Meghan, which is horse shoe throwing. We funded projects maybe around the GAA, around local history and we considered them very worthy. So that's why we set up this award. So each year we have an award of, two awards of 650 euro towards a local publication. We have also funded maybe creative writing groups as well, but it's quite broad. The Recording Bursary Award, a platform for recording studio, it's an award for three days recording at our studio in Leakslip. And again, that may be Covid dependent, exactly how that will happen. But again, we will honour the commitment if that has to be delayed. But we also have the facility in Leaksip, but we also have a mobile unit as well. So you work there with our sound technician for three days. It could be a singer-songwriter who wants to record an album, could be a band. But in the past, we've funded choirs and we've also funded writers who wanted to record some aerial work as well. But with all of these, we try to allow as much flexibility as possible. So it's up to you to see if your, if your project fits the scheme. A new award for last year was the Research and Thinking Bursary Award. So that's an award of 1700 euro for an artist to, to research and think. But with that, to work with a mentor as well and you need to assign a mentor and there's a fee for the mentor of 500 euro with that. And a bit like the emerging, sorry, the Artist in Schools, the mentor needs to be named, the artist, you know, there needs to be a clear plan set out between the two collaborators in the application. The Tyrone Goats Re-centre Residency Bursary Awards, that's an artist's workplace in Monaghan. And each year we award a bursary to go there. Well, we, we usually say that we are going to award two awards of two weeks, but it often works out that it's four awards of one week because it's one of our, one of our schemes that gets the most number of applications. And so that's basically to go and work and work amongst other artists and feedback again from that to just work with other people and maybe push you in a direction that you didn't necessarily think you were going to go has been really good. And again, if that has to be delayed for Covid reasons this year, we'll honour that. The Youth Arts Residency Bursary Award is for a group, it could be like a youth club, a foroiga, any type of youth project that has some sort of formal status or gathering. And that scheme is to work with an artist, again, it could be an artist in any art form area. And like the emerging artist, or sorry, the Artist in Schools Award, the artist and the youth project need to put in a joint application. And that award is for 50, or sorry, 2500 euro as well. So they're the first tranche of grants that the Art Service have been delivering over the last number of years. But there's, so I just left those on their own and then we have some other new schemes as well that I'm going to go through. Before that, I'm just going to go through some statistics because this is probably our most asked question is how much money do we give? So I've just pulled out some stats there from the last two years. And so you can see the total award under the Arts Act, so that's that catch-all grant that I mentioned at the start. So last year we gave almost 44,000 euro, just up from nearly 40,000 euro previously. And then all of the other schemes I mentioned on the previous slides, 39,350. So you can see there we awarded 82, nearly 83,000 euro in the last two years. The average grant last year was 739, that was up a little bit from the previous year of 579. And the reason for that is that we had less applications last year, just because our deadline coincided with the first Covid lockdown. A number of applications were withdrawn or projects that just couldn't be realised because they just didn't, they weren't adapted for delivering, delivery at the time. But still in all the statistics, it's a good indication as to what we give. The minimum grants of 200 euro, that could be somebody who applied for, maybe wants to buy a new camera and the camera costs 300 euro. So they've got a contribution towards that. It's not that somebody applied for 1800 euro and we only gave them 200, but sometimes you can make your grant ineligible. So for example, if you are an art group and you want to have a launch and you're applying to us for, maybe you're going to get a masterclass with some professional artist, but you also want to have an exhibition and you're going to have a cheese and wine launch. Like we don't fund alcohol with launches. So sometimes there's parts of your requests that we just don't, we say, well, we can't fund that element of it. And sometimes the requests are modest. So if you're only asking for a small amount of money, then you know, you're not going to get offered more than you've asked for. And you can see that at the maximum award in the last two years was 1800 euro. And so the number of applications, I suppose 85, that would be pretty consistent. Last year, like I said, down a little bit. And not everybody gets an award, it is competitive. But having said that, some people apply for more than one award. So if you've applied for three different schemes, it's unlikely you're going to get awards in more than one, you might, but it's unlikely. We are oversubscribed for all of our schemes. So just to bear that in mind. But you're welcome to apply for as many schemes as you want. And so, but this year we're actually setting the maximum award as 2500 euro. Whether we'll actually award that maximum award, I don't know. It depends very much on the number of applications that we get. Okay, so new for this year then, we have two awards under the Decade of Commemorations Programme. So this is part of a national programme marking the decade of centenaries from 1921 to 1923. And the department have launched a new initiative for artistic and creative endeavours. So we're rolling this out under that. So we're going to have at least one award of 7500 euro. And we'll also have a Short Grass Film Commission Award of 12,500 euro. And they need to have some sort of a Kildare focus. And there is a lot of information on what it covers, what, what might be developed under the application form on the, on the website as well. But it, it may be political themes, but could also look at the social, economic and cultural events of the time. So, and then, so the Short Grass Film Awards, each year we offer a number of awards for 1500 euro and that's for filmmakers from Kildare for awards of 1500 euro. And they may end up with finished films or again, it could be development money to develop an idea. But the needs, they, we funded a number of them. Last year we had a Short Grass Film Festival in early March. So today, I think we've, we funded about 34 films over the last decade or so. And a lot of that development money did lead to some fabulous projects, mostly short films. And they're for filmmakers from Kildare. The next two commissions, the Short Grass Award of 12,500, that's open to anybody. You don't have to be from or living in Kildare. And the, the reason we developed this initiative really is to promote the county as a film-friendly county and to encourage filmmakers to come to Kildare. I've already mentioned the Decade of Commemorations Short Film Commission of 12,500. And again, that's open to all filmmakers, not from Kildare, but there needs to be some sort of a Kildare link and it needs to be shot in the county. So moving on to the next round of grants, the Creative Ireland Grants. So we have quite a substantial award here and this isn't just limited to the arts. So this is open to creative industries, heritage and Irish language. I suppose the main difference between this and the Arts Act Grant is that there needs to be some sort of a public engagement or interface. So they tend to be collaborative projects that maybe work alongside other people or that there's going to be some sort of seminar or presentation or exhibition. But again, it's quite broad and if you want some more information on what we have funded under Creative Ireland, if you have a look at the Creative Ireland Kildare website, quite a, all of our projects actually are, in the last number of years are listed there and you'll see how diverse they are. So we're looking at themes from individuals or groups around wellbeing, sense of place, heritage, steam, Irish language and climate change. And some of those are interchangeable, there may be more than one theme explored as well. But there's a substantial award, the funding here starts from 3000 to 10,000 euro. And some projects did receive significant funding in the last few years. But like, I really need to emphasise that public engagement or interface is really important as part of it and that needs to be very clear in the application. Following on from that then, an initiative of Creative Ireland is Cronin and Oog, which is the National Day of Creativity in Children and Young People. And it's on Saturday, 12th of June this year. And we're inviting bursary applications to deliver programming for Cronin and Oog. So, and the awards are maximum of 2000 euro. It's hard to say what life is going to be like in June this year. So we'll invite applications for online, in-room, hybrid delivery. Last year, all of the programming was delivered online. And again, if you have a look at Kildare Art Service YouTube, we have all of the online content is listed there. There's a playlist called Cronin and Oog and all of the, the online content that we created for Cronin and Oog is there. Of course, we would like to think we'll have some in-the-room programming this year. But we'll wait and see, but if you're interested in that, you need, obviously the focus needs to be children and young people. And ideally the voice of the children would some way be represented through the application and the project. So moving on then to how to apply or what happens next. So as I mentioned, this year we have a new online application, so that's the only way you can apply this year. You have to go through that system. So the deadline, as I mentioned, is the 18th of March and we don't accept late applications. So we always get external panels to assess the grants. So, but if there's for example, a Decade of Commemorations application comes in, the staff internally in Kildare County Council who deal with Decade of Commemorations or if there's heritage element, we talk to the Heritage Officer, if it's arts and wellbeing, we talk to our person who manages the Arts and Health Programme and they'll just put some comments on it. And then the, all the applications are assessed by an independent panel. So usually it's an Arts Officer from another county and an artist as well. So they make provisional recommendations. And then the recommendations then they're, and part of the application form you're asked for your municipal district area. The applications are sorted by municipal district, so that's the five electoral areas in Kildare. And the grants relevant to that electoral area will be formally passed by the councillors in that area. Usually we try to have the assessment finished by the end of March and to get them before the municipal district meetings in April. So hopefully we'll be able to stick to that this year. We're just keen that people will know as soon as possible if they have the grants. But if you want to know before, before the councils, council has actually passed the, the decisions, we can offer you a provisional decision. So that's saying, well, this is what the panel has recommended. But until they're formally adopted by council, we can't actually say that you've definitely been awarded the, the grant. So then when you receive, if you receive the grant, we do need to set you up in our system. So you will need to get a bank account or a credit union account. And we will need proof of like a bank header and some, just some practical things that we need from you. But I would say, if you're thinking of applying now and you're a small group and you don't have a bank account or a credit union account, I'd say don't rush out and do it now, I'd say, because you may not receive a grant. And we will allow some time to get that set up, but ideally as soon as possible because there's a lot of admin involved with this. So, and then the, the payments are all made electronically. So, but sometimes if there's a delay, it's usually down to the, like I said, maybe something from your end that there's some, maybe setting up a bank account or something like that. And yes, you can get feedback if you're unsuccessful. Usually we just try to guide you on how, you know, maybe something that you've missed and that you might like to include some extra information the next time round. But hopefully by attending a session like this, some of those issues might have been resolved. But it can, it can be useful to get feedback as well because sometimes there's other things at play. Or like for examples, I mentioned earlier that maybe if your project is really a commercial event, we just don't fund things like that. And I just, I usually give the example as well that, just say you apply for the Visual Artist Award in Riverbank Art Centre. And just say Riverbank have their visual arts programme for next year, this is hypothetical now. So just say they have four exhibitions involving photography next year. And you're a photographer and you apply for that grant. Chances are you might not get it because they're looking at the programme for the year. And so maybe somebody that has something that will be a complete contrast to what's there already. In that particular year, that one might be the one that fits in with the programme. So sometimes it can be other nuances around your application, so it can be always worth looking for feedback. And hopefully we can guide you on how to apply in, in following years. And so it's just important to take a long-term view, get to know us, sign up for our e-bulletin, follow Kildare Art Service on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. And hopefully in the future you'll be able to attend our events again. I mentioned the e-bulletin, yeah, and the PPN is a public participation network. So trying to encourage all group applicants, you should, you should register for that. And you will find out all sorts of information about community-based initiatives and supports. So it's, it's a good one to, to register for. And the council are really pushing for all group applications for grants to register with the Public Participation Network. We love getting acknowledged, we love seeing our logo on things. It's really good to let councillors in the area know what you're up to. So please, if you have events or, you know, projects that have been funded, just let them know, tell us. And also just report back, sometimes life gets in the way, projects get delayed. Just keep in touch, let us know what's going on. And we're always flexible with people on delivering projects. And just to document your work, you know, to get as good photographs or videos or press coverage as best you can and hold on to it. And hopefully you can use it again for future applications. Now, so this is our new online application system that I'm going to talk you through in a few minutes. That's there, looking very shiny and new. So just, I can't emphasise this enough, the deadline is the 18th of March, the day before St Patrick's Day, it is a bank holiday. So, you know, opening up the form on St Patrick's Day morning, it's, it's too late. You really need to familiarise yourself with the system. We haven't asked for anything that we haven't asked for before, but just allow that extra bit of time that maybe wifi goes down, power cut, all those sort of things. So there's a month really from today that you have time to apply. So I'd say really urge you just to make sure you leave yourself a plenty of time that it's not ending up in a stressful situation applying for grants. Okay, so I'm just going to go to questions. So I have some questions here in the chat. Now, somebody here was asking if there's any grants to help upgrade studios for supporting artists with online work. I say yes, there is. It would need, I suppose you can, something like that, you'd need to just send us quotes and exactly what it is you're looking for. But we do fund equipment. Again, it might be, it depends on if it's a commercial business and you're making money from it. As opposed to a community venture, you just need to look at the scope of the Arts Act Grant. It might be something that maybe the Artistic Entrepreneur Initiative could fund. Although that's, yeah, maybe that would be the best one, either that or the Arts Act would, would be the one to go. But certainly to support artists for online presentation of work obviously is, is a big thing now. And I think we're very keen on things that will improve quality. So anything that will upskill, improve experiences for the artists or for the audiences as well, we're keen on. Someone is asking here about a musical art project that would, would highlight talent in the area. Yeah, I think you just need to describe how you're going to do that, how you're going to find the musicians or is it a, as well. We have, Kildare has just started a music generation project and Kildare County Council have put significant funding into music generation to support educate, or music education programmes for children and young people. So if, this is one of those, I said, that may be looking for feedback, that if it's, we feel that music generation is doing it anyway, that maybe there might be an overlap there, so that might be something to consider. The tips on the format of the documents needed to be submitted, I'd say bear in mind that the Arts Act Grant, we had over 80 applications last year. And you'll see on the, the form that I'm going to go through, the Arts Act Grants allows for three documents or links to be uploaded. But if every, if there's 80 applications and everybody uploads three, that's, that's 240 documents that a panel are going to have to look at as well as the application form. So I just say have it really clear and it's easy to read. And if you're going to put up your CV, that's the documents, say CV and that it's, you know, just nicely presented and easy to read and just visually looks nice. So, you know, so you don't need any, anything fancy, I'd say, just shouldn't cost you any money. Well, particularly this year when you don't have to print things out. I suggest it's really easy to read and for somebody that doesn't know anything about your project, that it's easy to navigate. So somebody is asking here, is a platform for recording bursary disorder? So somebody is asking here, is a platform for recording bursary just ordered to one, a single applicant? Or do you give about multiple applicants? It depends. We have given up to four awards and sometimes we give more. That's something we usually try to accommodate everybody that applies, if we can at all, if we feel the projects are worthy of support. And, okay, somebody else. Do all the short film applications have to fit under centenary themes? No, that's just, there's just one scheme this year, just because we have some funding. And the decade of centenaries, it's a very particular thing. And I suppose it's a particular moment in Irish history as well. We just thought it'd be nice to see what could come in. And so there's one scheme that fits under the centenary theme and the other one can be for, for any theme at all. And they're usually short films. I know twelve and a half thousand euro might sound like a lot compared to some of the other schemes that we have, but making films costs a lot of money. But it can, you know, there's a wide range of, of, approaches to it. So there's, there's one that's for the decade of centenaries and there's one, it's just our, regular scheme that we have every year. And then the bursary award again can be for, very, very open to, to any, any projects at all. Okay, is there criteria around support materials? And, okay, so, and someone's saying here, trying to capture full details in a hundred and fifty words is quite challenging. Well, I suppose that's deliberate. Again, I'm just conscious of, suppose you've got one application, but I'm thinking that we have to look at what the assessment panel has to look at. And so I think you could look at CVs of the, of the people involved or profiled or biogs. And maybe you can put an outline of the project as well, so you could have, and that can be quite detailed. So you could have press clippings from previous projects or you can put links to social media, websites, YouTube clips. And so it's very broad. It really depends on the project because we're covering so many art forms, the support material tends to be very diverse. We do only allow three documents to be uploaded, but that could be that you have one that has, all the information about the project, including CVs together. And again, we're just looking at it for ease of submission. And I actually did the assessment for another county with this online system last year and some people had up to twelve, separate documents and it was just really, really hard to navigate. So, yeah, there's a little bit of work probably in tailoring this support material. So there's a little bit of work involved with this, this year. So I think, like I said, just allow time that you can, prepare your support material because it is an important part. The main thing that you want to look at with your support material, is that you're showing evidence that you can deliver on whatever it is you said you can do or that you have some sort of a track record. We are keen to support emerging artists. And so you could be, you know, a college graduate who has a good idea. So that's not to say we wouldn't support somebody like that as well. But again, you need to just demonstrate that you have some commitment to it or you have some, and history of working in this area. And somebody asks here, can you apply for the Creative, Artistic and Creative Endeavours Award in Creative Ireland? I say absolutely. I'd say just allow enough time to apply for both. And as I said, there's a number of assessment panels, so we'll have, panellists dealing with separate things. You need to make a distinct application. So don't think, just because you put support material on one that is going to carry over to the other, it's not. Because with data protection, we can only share folder A for one scheme with this panel and then we could have another panel. So it just might be, it might be a little bit frustrating. You might have to sort of upload similar materials for the same projects. Do you include references or letters of support? Yeah, it depends on, on the project. So, but yeah, I'd say anything that is helping to endorse your project. And particularly if you maybe are an emerging artist, so, you don't really have a track record, so you can't show your CV with your, you know, performances over the last five years or all the exhibitions you've been to. So I think anything that would, I suppose, validate your application. And again, some of those, because we have limited the number of documents it can upload, so it might be that there's a CV and maybe a project proposal, and a letter of support, just to put them all in, in one document. Again, it's just for ease for the panel to, to view them. And somebody asked, do we co-fund projects if we were to work a museum? Yeah, you just need to show, if a project is co-funded though and it's significant funding, you would need to show, a letter of support from the other funder as well. Or some sort of a commitment to show where the money is going to come from. And then somebody is asking here about, do you need a business plan for the Entrepreneur Awards? It's probably better if you do, but I think that's something that the Leo Office can provide. The local enterprise office will, provide assistance with a business plan. So I'd say it could be a, a very drafty one. And that maybe at the end of it you might have a more developed one, but you do need to have a business idea. But I think we'd probably be a little bit generous in terms of what the business plan might look at. It just should be a clear project. And, okay, so I think I'll just move on. And like I said, we have some more time at the end. So this is the new system, so kildareco.co submits dot com. And so you can see here up the top, there's a homepage, we can have a little look around. You can sign in if you've already, been on the site or to register. And you can go in and view the forms. So to register, you need an email address. You're going to be asked for your name and a password. And so, and there is another section that I'm not talking about today, which is the profile page. And there is some, again, this is a catch-all for all, some people could be applying for other schemes of the council as well. So, and it does ask information about community groups. Not all of the headings are related to you, but just fill them out as best you can. And it does ask, do you have a Public Participation Network number? If you don't have one, just put in zero. Or just fill in something. Some of the fields are mandatory. And if it asks for chairperson, secretary, treasurer, and if it's just you, you're an individual, you just fill it in, just your name. And then you might have to put in any, any of the boxes that are, you know, prompting you that it's a compulsory field, to just put something into it. So, and this is the categories here, again, because this is a screenshot, it's not actually live on the website, so I can't scroll down to show you. But you can see the categories here. There's arts, creative Ireland, decade of commemorations. There's community grants and festival grants, which I'm not going to talk about today. They are going to be managed by the Community Department in Kildare County Council and they'll be advertised shortly, but, I'm not even going to mention those today, other than to say they're there. And the other category, if you scroll down that little box there, is the film, the short grass film projects. And then each one, you can see we have a nice band there, Cronin and Oak, decade of commemorations. That's just a screenshot of the first page. And so you just have a little mosey around, but all of the schemes that I've mentioned in the, on the presentation previously are all listed here. Okay, so this is the Arts Act Grant Scheme Form, and I thought I'd just mention this as it might apply to the majority of you here. So again, each, but each scheme is laid, each, yeah, scheme is laid out similarly to this. So there is a description as to what the scheme is intended for. And anyone who's applied previously, this is basically the same text, just in an online version. And there's eligibility for each of the, of the schemes as well. So that's really important that you have a good read of the description and of the eligibility before you apply. And you'll be asked to sign to say that you have authority to make this application and that it's all above board. So next part then, and I just filled this out, so I just made up this Willow Arts Collective. So you need to have name of your group, or if it's you, so it can just be Lucina Russell, that's fine as well. And you need to choose your municipal district and that's linked to how the grants are assessed. So you need to have that when you apply. And you can see I've just filled out here, I've just made up this group. So I'm the chairperson. And I've given us a secretary as well and treasurer. But equally, if that was just me, so I'm just Lucina Russell, individual artist, just put down your own name. And that's fine. But you'll see here under treasurer, we have no treasurer, so I've just put in NA. And under the phone number put in zero because they are fields you have to fill in. So if there's something, and they're all highlighted in yellow on the form. So if something is in yellow, you have to fill it in. So if it doesn't apply to you, just put NA, no or zero. And then a brief description of your project. So again, there's a word count on this. And again, this is really for the assessment panel who are going to maybe be looking at eighty applications at a time, that at Atlantic can just get some sense of what the project is about. Can be very useful when you go back to score at the end, to just remind yourself, oh yeah, that's that project. And then we have a detailed proposal here of the project. And again, sometimes, I suppose when we had the paper versions and you could extend the boxes, sometimes people could fill in two pages and it still wasn't clear exactly what, what they were looking for. And again, it can be hard to read when you're not familiar with the project. So we have set an upper limit of a hundred and fifty words. And I know somebody said earlier, it can be hard to describe everything in, in that. And so I, just to show you what I've, again, this is, I just made this up. Willow Arts Collective are a group of visual artists from the Cora engaging in socially engaged arts practice through visual arts media, textiles and photography. We were established in two thousand and fifteen. We wish to work with ABC Women's Group to create a body of work and identity in place culminating in an exhibition of work, for International Women's Day through weekly workshops. The lead artist will be Joe Brown, photographer and Sam White, textile artist who led the most acclaimed project fire with DEF Youth Services, support materials attached. So, we just want something that added lines who go, okay, right, to get a good sense of that. And also I would really urge, we have groups that we've worked at for a long period of time and then we've hopefully lots of new applications, applicants each year, which we really, you know, welcome. And, and they're each treated equally because they're all assessed by independent panels. So it's really important. Even if you think you're very well-known in Kildare, you can assume that the person or panel reading it, know nothing about your project. So you need to put your best foot forward as to how you present yourself. That's very important. And so who will benefit from the project? And so here we have, so we have the Arts Collective, we've named the artists. I've put myself down as project coordinator and we have somebody, Sway Fran Black from the Cora Resource Centre is going to lead the ABC Women's Group. And we also have activities run for the Acorn After School Project. And the commencement date, I know some of these might, might be a little bit tricky this year. Deadline, as I said, is the eighteenth of March, but really we won't make awards until April, so the project shouldn't be starting before April. We don't fund projects retrospectively, so if they've already started, then you shouldn't really be applying for it. But if it is something, it's a phased project that you're doing over a number of years. You could apply for a development stage of a project. And again, some of these mightn't have an end date, so you could just put in till the end of the year. But ideally, all of the projects should be happening by the end of this calendar year. If they don't, you need to let us know. We do ask for an update report by Halloween. And sometimes that's just to say, yes, all going well, our project is finished, or else it's going to be delayed till November for whatever reason. And as I said, Covid circumstances will be, you know, we will bear that in mind as well and we'll try to allow as much flexibility as we can on the delivery of projects. Obviously, the first thing is that people stay safe and we absolutely, wouldn't want anybody breaking any rules, that, that goes without saying. So your end date. And so then support materials here, and you can see, as you can see, there's only three files can be uploaded. Like I said, that really is, some, some of the other schemes, the Arts Act, we have limited to three. Some of the other schemes like the Emerging Visual Artist Bursary Award, you can upload more material. But we're just, there's so many applications for this. Like I said, we need to be mindful of our, our panel and what they can, look at. But you're, you can have links to websites, Vimeo, videos, YouTube and the first little icon there, that's just for, for files. So that can be Word documents. PDF is probably the best. And if it's PDF, it doesn't jump around. So whatever way you submit it, that's it. But like I said, clearly labelled, you know, nice project proposal, nice visuals are always good. And I'm always surprised that sometimes we get, and applications from visual artists, maybe they don't have any visuals. So, you know, it's nice and it can really brighten up an application as well. So, so there's just an example of a little piece that I uploaded there. And then to try and just name them, a title them that, they all make sense in the application. So this is the budget here. So I have just made up this budget for the project that I had mentioned there. And so you can see I've got artist fees, materials. This is artist fees for the women's project and then for the after schools and then there's some documentation. And on this, certainly be a little bit laborious that all of these fields are required. So you'll have to fill them in. But even if it's just a zero, you can see there, they're highlighted in orange, the one at the bottom that I didn't fill in. So just put in zero if it doesn't count or NA. And that's absolutely fine. So you can see there, the cost for my project here is two thousand two hundred and ten euro. And that's popped in on the following page. So, the Willow Arts Collective is looking for eighteen hundred euro, two hundred euro from their own funds. And the Family Resource Centre are going to put in two hundred and ten euro. So that balances out my budget. So that's important, that the budget must match, the total of the costs or the, you know, everything that's on, on this page, just to all add up. So this is pretty important. And I'm hoping, I think some of the weaker applications over the years, the budget was a little bit vague. So I'm hoping that this will actually prompt people to maybe think a little bit on, on what the project is going to cost. And I mean, you really should have a project, the budget broken down like this. It's not really enough to say we want two thousand or what is it, eighteen hundred euro for the project on the Cora. You know, we need to have a little bit of detail and even maybe more than what I have set out there. So, quotation, so if I was going to apply for equipment or, and materials, if you can, and if it's substantial, then you probably should. If it's over thousand euro, we certainly need to have a quotation uploaded. And sometimes, it's, I mean, this, this is something for all of the community grants, so it doesn't really apply for Arts Act. But just say, for example, you are, it was associated with a recording studio or an artist workshop or something like that, there might be, something to do with, you know, a building. So we'd need to know about that. But in most cases, you're just going to mark no. And here as well, consent, just say just planning permission. Again, maybe if you were going to put up a, a, a recording studio out of the back of your house, for example, we'd need to know about that too. So finally then, you're asked to just type in a signature and you can see that it, it'll, it'll sign your signature for you. And once you submit that, you get an email back to verify that it is you. And then, this is just, up until this stage, this is just saying I've, I've won signature. So I could go back and add other signatories, or email addresses. And anybody whose email address is on it, particularly for a group application, they'll just need to verify, yes, we are the, applicants of this. But up until this stage, if there's anything that you've missed, the, the system will tell you, you need to go back and fill in something. And some of those mandatory fields that I mentioned, the system will prompt you to do that. So if you've left something out, I mean, it, it won't tell you that you forgot to upload your CV, but some of those ones are in the budget or maybe the, the details about the applicant, it will prompt you. So you can save your application as you go along, and up until this point. And so you can go in and out, I'd suggest you go in, start an application, have a little look around, see what it is you need to go off and get. And then right up until this point, you, you can change it. But then once you press, press submit, that's it. So it's gone. That's it. And then, but you can, you can start a new application. The system will remember your profile. So if you filled in, and I didn't look at the profile today, if you filled it in, it should recognise you. But you might be doing one to apply as you. So that is, Lucina Russell is applying for me as a writer. I'm going to apply for something to publish my novel. And I'm also going to be the chairperson of the Willow Art Collective. And you can do that. So but you need to have two profiles. If I'm applying as an individual and as, as part of a project, there are two separate profiles and two separate applications. So that is it. And the main thing then is go look with your application. So look, I'm going to stop sharing the screen and I'm going to go, I think we have a lot of other questions here now. Somebody's asking, is there maximum number of items or pages for CVs allowed to be submitted in one single file? No, there isn't. But I'd say include what's relevant to your application. So if you've been working for twenty years as a painter, for example, I don't know if you need to be putting in things that you did twenty years ago unless there's some relevance to your application. So, if you're going to revisit something that you did before and you feel it's relevant, put it in. But I'd say don't put kitchen sink in. You know, you're trying to be fairly bespoke about, and quite specific about what you're looking for funding for. And sometimes we get so much information, that's actually hard to see what the, you have a good idea of what they're at roughly, but it's quite hard to know exactly what it is they're looking for. So, I'd say just be a little bit discreet on what it is you submit. And somebody asks if you have support in kind, does that value? Yes, you can include that. And support, and I mean, I know that our, our funding is pretty, is, is quite modest. So absolutely you can do that. So does it value? You can put it in the budget, it's just the budget needs to balance. So you know, if you have it in as, the income and expenditure needs to balance, that's the main thing. And I mean, it could be the case that if you're getting free rehearsal space from an organisation, and you're an individual artist, it might be nice to have the arts organisation to say, I support this application by whoever and we're offering weekly, rehearsal spaces or whatever and access to our recording studio. So that, that could help to support the application as well. And somebody is asking about municipal districts. Where you have artists from different areas working together on a project, how do you choose which to submit under? And I think I'd go with the main person, whoever the main applicant is. So just say you have a group of fifteen artists all around Kildare. So just say you have a group of fifteen artists all around Kildare. But one person is, you know, the person who you get the email, you're filling it out, I'd, I'd pick theirs. And there's a lot of them, it, it, it's really, and we're not, you know, there's no fences up around the county and we, and we've won projects outside of the county as well, obviously, and want people to come in. But it's really down to the assess, sorry, the signing off by council. So that's really what the municipal district about. So I'd say the main applicant. And somebody's asked here, if your project involves collaborating with an artist from another district who's applying for, from her county council for co-funding, do I need to apply as a group rather than an individual? I'd say, so I'm going to just say that again, if your project involves collaborating with an artist from another district and that it's another county council, do I need to apply as a group rather than an individual? I'd say no, I'd say apply as an individual and name it to say, on the budget to say, or on your description to say, I'm collaborating with whoever it is. And they are making an application to whatever local authority for. I'd say it should be, if there's two artists of equal weight doing something similar. So we'll just say your total budget cost is four thousand euro, they should probably be applying for two thousand euro from their local authority. And that there's some, some of the documentation submitted would back that up. I hope that answers your question. Okay, and somebody asked, if you make a mistake, can you redo it? Not if you've submitted it, but I think there's enough prompts within the, like I said, if you forgot to upload something, you will be prompted that you did. But I think you've got enough opportunity and it's actually quite easy to navigate around as well. So un, until you press submit, like I, I wouldn't suggest doing it all in one go. Like I said, you can set up your application, save it in draft, and I can see already quite a number of people have gone in to have, have a look around and just to test it out. So you can fill it out ABC, you know, you can do, but I'd say don't, don't submit it like that, you know. But yeah, until you press the final go button, you, you can change it as many times as you like. Usually what happens with the scripts, so that's for the short grass film, for the twelve and a half thousand euro award. It's often, there's an independent panel and they're, they're filmmakers who, who, we usually have producer and filmmakers who look at those. And it comes down to the budget. And if the script is too long and they look at the budget and think, right, well, it's, because people need to get paid. That's the thing with the Film Commission, everybody, all of the creative team, the actors, the crew, they all need to be paid. So if it just looks like it's not going to be feasible to do it within the budget, that could stand against it, but there is no maximum. And I mean, it doesn't have to be a short film. We, we have had submissions for full-length films, but we've only funded short films so far. Like I said, the bu, the budget is small for, for, for filming. Okay, so an emerging artist. I think it's up to you to decide about, and I did say it was open, but how you define someone as artist and someone that was returning to being a professional artist, have many years as working as a carer. I think it's up to you to outline that in the application. And like I said, we're deliberately vague because if you put too many rules in it, then it instantly excludes somebody. So I feel you, you'd need to articulate that in your application. If that is referring to Webber Bank Art Centre again, there is only one award. So if you don't get that award as an emerging artist, then, you know, that, then you don't get it. And sometimes they go back to people, you know, if there's other proposals that are interesting, they could go back maybe again and look at an exhibition another time. But I think maybe to not limit your options, I would look at the Arts Act Grant as well and maybe to look for some development funding as well, particularly if you're returning to, to be a professional artist after a number of years. That may be just a broader application. But I'd say maybe put in both. So put in for the emerging artist and for an Arts Act Grant. Or some of the other schemes as well. Could be interesting to look at the mentoring award as well. We've got lots of fantastic artists and creatives living in the county and the standard is always, always really high. But I think there's some really good opportunities there. I mean, the total pot of funding, I'm not too sure what the total awards are, but there is significant funding and opportunities there. So I hope that that was useful for you and that hopefully you have some new ideas. And that it's not too daunting as well. Like I said, the online system, I hope that wasn't putting anybody off. Like really in the last two years, we just didn't have the capacity to have anything other than the paper system. So thankfully we're saving a few rainforests this year. And like, once you save your profile, you'll be able to go in again. So next year, if you want to apply, or if there's other schemes like the festival grants, the community grants, the system will recognise your profile and your history will be there. So your applications from this year will be there as well. So it'll be like a little archive of what you've done, once you keep an eye on all your login details. So I'm going to leave it at that, everybody. So thank you very much. We've had really good attendance today. And so I hope I've answered all your questions as best I can. If not, you can contact us separately. But like I said, really just maybe before you contact us, if you just go through the website yourself and have a look, because all of the eligibility is there and the criteria and, and what the scheme sets out for what the ambition of it is, is there. So hopefully you should have enough information with what we've set out. Okay, so thanks everybody and good luck with your applications. Hope everybody's keeping safe and well.